Good grief. I think there's some record.
Those are all chairman only.
These are all chairman only.
You don't want to hit.
There's a thing called a stamp.
Steve, I hadn't seen you. You look like the old man in the sea there.
Yeah. He keeps trying to tell us, Joe, that he's the great of the silver fox. He's more like his gray gopher.
Is it a Friday or Saturday? Colleen, did you have him position the camera so you wouldn't be on the screen?
Actually, I did.
I figured you must.
All right, we're closing up. Next up, we have Cody Regional Health Community Prevention Manager Wendy Morris for an update on prevention grant.
Thank you for having me. I put packets in your chairs. My apologies. I will make sure to get those to Susan in a timely manner for your board packets. So you don't have all of these papers to go through. But the first page is two sided. It has my, it has my typical commissioners' reports. And then the other documents are just handouts. Attached and those are listed on the bottom of the second page. So if anything piques your interest, you can delve further into that, but. I wasn't sure if I needed to kind of update or review for our new commissioner, what I do and who I am, but I'll introduce myself. Okay, I'm Wendy Morris. I am the Coalition Coordinator for Healthy Park County. And Cody Regional Health is the fiscal, well, Park County is the fiscal agent for the grant. And I am employed by Cody Regional Health through a, an MOU and a partnership through those three organizations. So.
Good to meet you.
Sorry.
I'm stuck.
Oh, yes. Hi, good to see you. The areas that I work on for Park County are mental health and suicide prevention. I work on underage drinking, binge drinking, tobacco and vaping, and then. Other drugs, which would include everything from marijuana, methamphetamines, opioids, prescription drug misuse. So everything kind of in between, however, it impacts the community of Park County. So we look at the data, we do assessments and determine. What strategies that we want to implement here in our community at our community level. We wouldn't do, what we'll do here might be very different that they're doing in Laramie or in Cheyenne, and it should be. Because our needs are very different here than they would communities. It is a two-year grant. We are about eight months into our second grant cycle and. I got the numbers from the Department of Health this morning. We are very under budget. So for this grant cycle, so I, I have some. There's some things that we didn't get to, that I haven't been able to do in the first part of the grant cycle in 2020. For maybe obvious reasons, some events and trainings and things we would been more active and participating in on a community level. So we'll. I do feel like we're coming out of hibernation a little bit. So events are being planned and we'll, we'll start. We're having trains. We're actually having one later this week at Northwest College. A countywide connect training. There is a document there, but that is a countywide partnership between all three school districts, law enforcement. Both hospitals and the community mental health provider Yellowstone Behavioral and will be doing a suicide postvention team training. So. Stay tuned. There's lots happening. I'd be happy to go through and highlight a couple of things, or if there's any questions from the report. I'd be happy to address the first half, the first doc, or the first bit there. It talks about, we've had two coalition meetings in this quarter. In January and March, we had to have them virtually and our attendance has been great. We have. We will always continue, even though we're going to try to start meeting in person again, we'll always have that virtual component because we just have noticed our attendance is. Been climbing every meeting. So it's been nice. And Dossi does attend those meetings as a liaison to this board. The second part of the report will list just some of the various events and trainings that I've been active in for the past three months. And the coalition work by prevention priority, those are the prevention trends that we are working to address. So.
Mr. Chairman. Just to interrupt real quick. So have you, because of COVID, obviously, of where you're at here, did you notice any upticks in?
Use.
Substance abuse and suicide.
Um, yes. So it's hard, it's a hard question to answer definitively across the board. What we have noticed is when. The first part of COVID, when students were home, there was some opportunities for unsupervision maybe or. Structure. So maybe students were using a little bit more. So vaping, we saw vaping use. And this is all anecdotal because we weren't able to. Acquire data in our regular ways. We also have heard throughout the state and across the community that adult alcohol consumption was up a bit. We do know that our young people are anxious and stressed. So we are actively, I'm actively working with the schools. With that, I've had a couple of meetings over the past couple of months with the all three superintendents. And they are concerned. They are concerned because they have pretty significant budget cuts that they're implementing right now in their districts. And social, emotional learning, substance abuse prevention and mental health promotion are going to be one of the first areas cut. So.
Wonder what our numbers were and how they compare to areas of the country that are not, don't have in school.
I don't have that information, but I will gladly.
Something coming?
It is something we are absolutely looking at. Absolutely. Sure. So, um, what other questions?
Mr. Chairman. I got one real quick. Maybe you can help weigh in on this. You know, there was some discussion about some legislation this year to put more emphasis and throw some money at suicide prevention in schools. What, what happened with that?
It did not, it did not pass.
Okay.
However, what I would, I went and I did reach out to Representative Williams and let her know. I appreciated her efforts with that. We also had some local youth that participated in that, the Youth for Justice Group out of Cody High School. And they were incredibly articulate and very well organized and informed. And they were. As long, as well as Dan Kossaboom, Dr. Kossaboom at Cody High School, the school psychologist, was also testified in support of that legislation. But what I can assure the five of you is that we are already doing the right thing here in Park County.
Well, you know, and that's, that's what prompted my question was, is when we had our legislative meeting earlier this year. Before the session started, that's one of the topics of conversation. And Rachel Williams actually was questioning the program. And I was quite surprised, but every commissioner in the big Warren Basin was saying how great this program was and it's working. So don't mess with it. So obviously.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And what I can tell you is I'm working directly with the superintendent. Powell has already had QPR implemented in their school districts. Matisse is already doing a version of that. And as a matter of fact, and I put the dates on here, we will be in Cody High Schools. For an entire week, training every Cody High School student in QPR training in about two weeks. So we will have community members, just to let you know how, what it looks like. Trained community members, not staff of Cody High School, will go into the school. We will take over essentially second hour and we will do that Monday through Thursday. And by the time we have done that. We'll do four or five classes a day. And by the end of Thursday, we'll have trained every student in Cody High School along with staff members.
Have you heard any scuttlebutt down there about decreasing funding for the program? And I know we're obviously funded for this year, 2021.
I have heard a little scuttlebutt, but I am going to keep doing my job and know that you guys like where this is and we're going to continue to move forward. I can't get into that. Just like you guys listen to the scuttlebutt. You can't do that now, Joe. So suicide prevention and mental health has been one of our biggest topics, I would say, of recently. But we are with prom and graduation around the corner. We're only talking about underage drinking, social hosting. And vaping is always, of course, unfortunately with our youth, a particular, an issue that we're always looking at. In your packet, I did provide some information about the medical marijuana. Marijuana was a legislative issue, as I'm sure you all know. It did not go anywhere this year, but I am fairly certain that we will not have heard the last of it. So. We are just hoping to educate and inform as if I'm allowed to do. And so if you ever have any questions. Those surveys were in partnership with the University of Wyoming Statistical Analysis Center. So we did a Wyoming survey. So there are some interesting points that are, for clarification, a lot of Wyoming residents did believe that medical marijuana would be. Distributed by a physician or through a pharmacy. So there's just some misperceptions and that we need to make sure that we're clarifying. That we know what we're getting once we do decide, or if we do decide to legalize medical and or recreational. So. Anything else?
More questions?
There's a lot here and I apologize, but again, I'm coming out of hibernation and we're doing a lot and there's a lot going on. So.
No, we really appreciate what you're doing with this. And just a quick update for Commissioner Mandold is. Three years ago or so, the state came to us and said, the state wasn't surprised, surprised the state was having problems with this prevention. You know, the prevention programs or message or whatever. So they came to the county and said, here's the money, you run. And we were hesitant at first. And but we, we partnered with, with the hospital to run the grant program. They've got Wendy on it. And it's been doing great, you know, and the one thing we were pushing back, you know, as Commissioner Tillman was talking about earlier on the suicide prevention is, you know. And we were anything but not wanting to go forward with suicide prevention, but we felt that we didn't want our hands tied and directed of how we had to do it. Because we, we knew we were doing a good job. We knew Wendy was doing a good job with it. And we were hearing the same from the other counties, as they were doing a good job with it. It works. Don't mess with it. So we were getting, I was getting some pushback down in Cheyenne that we were, you know, against suicide prevention, which is anything. But the truth, you know, so we were, like I said, we like the direction that's happening. And, and I will, I will echo. What Wendy said about the kids coming down there and testifying. They did a great job. They were well informed. They were very courteous. We got, we did get them an audience with the governor and he sat down with them for about. Twenty, thirty minutes and, and took questions, answered questions. It was, it was a good experience for those kids.
They represented the community very well.
So as far as reporting to the state, does the county do the reporting or do you do the reporting?
I do all the reporting and I have my contact here at the county is Public Health. So it's Bill Crampton. So all my invoicing goes through that, through the him and his office. But the hospital is the fifth, my fiscal, so they employ me as an employee. So that was another opportunity that I wouldn't have to come on as employee of the county. So. I, I do feel it's worked out well and I've, and I regionally, I do have a strong relationship with the other three counties in the basin and we get together. Quarterly, if possible, and we try to share resources. Park County, we do have a little bit more money. It's based on population and size. So we have a, we're kind of the. Bigger of the group, but anytime we can have something and we can invite them to participate, we do that. So we do a lot of sharing of resources and it's a good team effort. I guess one thing I would just like to mention is moving forward, again, you will have this in your packet. However, if there's ever a question, a topic comes up from a constituent or someone and you're like, I don't know, but you want to know, then. Commissioner Overfield is my, is our liaison. She knows how to get ahold of me anytime and, or you can, you're always welcome to contact me directly and I'm happy to come and update. And also moving forward, we've done this in the past. We've done vaping presentations, updated on marijuana and hemp. I'm happy to provide if there's a topic that you'd like to learn more about as a board, I'd be happy to, to do that as well. That's all. I just need, I need one of those chairman's signatures.
See right there, that's what I just did.
Can I, can I get it at least? Oh, yes. Well, thank you very much for having me and I'll report quarterly. This is the MOU between the coalition, the hospital and the county. It's already been approved by. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Wendy.
Thanks, Wendy. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, up next, we need to discuss and approve when we will have our. Public hearing to discuss the budget and when we'll approve the budget. Colleen?
Mr. Chairman, we'd like to set dates for. Public hearing for the budget to be Monday, July 12th, evening at 6:00 PM. And then the final approval will be on July 13th, which is not normal. Thursday meeting, but you are here for staff meeting and everything. If you could. Meet and approve that, that would be great. Thought about the sixth and seventh, but that puts it a little close to the.
Mr. Chairman, don't move.
Move from second to public hearing for the budget will be Monday, July 12th, 2021, and the final approval, if we decide to do so. Be on, hey, it's, you know. Never though. Monday, July 13th, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. When did you want to do it?
I was going to Alaska the 12th. Now I got a couple more days.
You don't have to, have to. I won't be here on the 12th. Already, that's what we were talking about. They have a quorum, but we, I won't be here for the public meeting. Well, motion is still carried.
I haven't bought my tickets yet, so I'm all right. I don't care.
Oh, man. Oh, my.
I just like to be out once.
This is Dossi's committee.
Their committee. I just take notes.
Okay. Up next, we have. I'm going to kick it over to Commissioner Overfield. We have a discussion on Park County personnel wage salary plan and employee, employee retirement plan. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, over the last six or eight months, we've been looking at different things. Look at salaries and benefits for county employees and, and related to the budget and places that we might see that we can help out on the budget side of things. I came to you in a work session a month or so ago with some thoughts and, and we re did a few of those things or re looked at a few of those things, I guess. The committee is made up of all of the elected officials and the department heads. So we, we met as many times as we could with as many available people as we could to try to, to get this taken care of. And there's four things that we'd like to bring up today that are just kind of the beginning things that we found that we thought. If we can move these through, we will have better, a better idea of budget numbers. As we look to see whether there are any wager salary increases or what we do with the grade and step scale after today. So the first one that we had was, we have an issue in two areas of the, well, at least two areas of the county budget that we wanted to deal with. On hiring and retaining employees and those were the, the cook and custodial positions that were a grade seven. We would request that those be moved to grade eight. We cannot get very many people to apply and, and they don't stay. Those particular positions do not qualify in, for the most part, for any benefits along with them. The other area of concern was road and bridge operators one and two. Operator one were at grade 11. We're asking them to move to grade 12. And operator two were at grade 14. We'd like to move those to 15. Going back to the cook and custodial, if we make that change, the estimated annual cost is $25,854. Thank you, Steve, for all of your work on numbers for me through this. The road and bridge, if we change both of those, the combination of those adds up to $30,786. Would affect the budget. Item number three was expanding the grade and step scale. And I think some of you in the commission have seen that happen before. But we went from, we're requesting to go from 15 steps to 30. And there's basically two reasons for that. One is not having people topped out on the top of the scale quite as quick if they worked here for multiple years. And the other is at budgeting times, when we look at those step changes, the, the amount of the step change was significant enough that we thought maybe we could. Move them in half. And that might be an easier scenario for the commissioners to look at when they're doing budgeting as far as gaining a step or adding a step to the employees. So that just changes that on paper. It does not change any of the, the base rate start or the, or the end. It didn't change those numbers. It just changed, spread it out in between 30 steps versus 15. The last one was a long discussion that we had over many months about Wyoming retirement. And right now, Wyoming retirement is paid 100% by Park County. The state has its own percentage rates that it uses and it has a entity portion and an employee portion. This county and several counties have never split it up that way. They've paid 100%. But we've also had the situation where when retirement was raised or has been raised over the last few years, the counties picked that up. And, and picked up the increased cost. So in looking at that, we determined that maybe for future budgeting issues. The county could. Cap what the county puts into Wyoming retirement for general employees at the 18.12% that it sits out right now. And for law enforcement employees, that would be 17.2%, since there are two different plans figured differently by Wyoming retirement. On July 1, Wyoming retirement is going to increase by 0.5%. That would then be picked up by the employees. If that happened. This savings to the county at this time would be $25,700 annually. The change would cost the average employee about $215 a year. Keeping in mind that this is their retirement program and they have the opportunity, once they get vested in, in the program to, to get that fund, those funds back. I think those are the four things that we wanted to list today. We have a multitude of other things that we're working on. And we'd probably bring those at a future time, but thought that these four would be helpful as we all get into the budget cycle, if we knew answers to these four. Anybody else that would like to?
Brian?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to comment on the, on the wage increase for the road bridge. I guess we, for the stability of the site, and I know. Richard Livingston, I sat in on a conference call with YDOT on changes that are coming down the pipe on training and certifications for getting a CDL. And all of our drivers in Roman Bridge have to have that CDL. In the past, we've hired them with that. But when it's mandatory training to the tune of never talk for four, five, six grand, you know, to do that, that's the longer, you know, $14 an hour. Guide to hire it and, and pay with the CDL. Those people are getting harder and harder to find. So. I think that's what we're up against the road bridges. That's just a, it's a skill level that's a little higher than what we're paying now and things like that. That's supposed to go into that February, February 22. Of 22. So those are some of the things that we're facing that's going to impact.
Dossi, I appreciate your spirit in this and, and coming to us with this. And these are, these are all recommendations that came from the committee as a whole?
Yes, yes, sir.
Even the, even the retirement?
We, we had lots of discussion about whether it. Could be lower than that if the county would only, I think we started discussing it at 16%. But through several things, number one, don't want to hurt the current employees or, or take much out of their paychecks at all. So we were looking at that scenario. Number two, most of the time, once you've granted a benefit to an employee, you don't take it back. So we looked at all of those things and determined that if we just start where we are today and then look at what we can do for the county benefits in the future, that that might be a better way to go.
Mr. Chairman.
Just a question, maybe Sheriff Stewart, does this also apply to you? Do you have step program, 30 step? Does that easily transferred when you? I know you got sergeant lieutenants that make more at each point. Does, does this transfer also to the, to your department too? The, maybe with, like road and bridge, have you talked to the employees? They, do they like the half step program or did they like the regular 15 program before? Have you surveyed any of your employees?
Real quick, if we've talked to, at least in room bridge, that's come up and we, we've discussed it. The way I guess we've looked at the additional steps is. It's closer to like an inflation step. So then it sort of makes it easier to, you know, find that step, try to find that break. So it's not saying that you can still just do one step. Still be two, three, four. But, but I think everybody gets that. That was the idea, I guess, that committee had was given the department managers, elected officials more flexibility. To be able to try to match you to what that inflation is, merit increases.
Which departments have had problems getting applicants? Any, which county?
I would tell you that one of the other big areas that we, that came to light through this too is, is law enforcement. Haven't had any discussions really, except for discussing how tough it is. It's tough to get the applicants, but even Sheriff Stewart was saying, even after he gets the applicants and gets people hired. It's extremely hard to keep them because our pay scale is three to $4 at a minimum less than other law enforcement agencies in the area and the state. And so we get them, we put them through the academy and they might stay a week or two, or four. Four right now, yeah.
But they get to work with the sheriff.
Exactly.
That's an extra bonus for them.
But there are some areas that we, we are concerned with being able to get employees and, and keep them. Because once you put in that time for training. It gets, it's as expensive on that size as it can be in your hourly rates. I mean, that's expensive to everybody too.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Dossi, you can probably answer this for me. Bottom paragraph four here says, when we're talking about the retirement. The $215 and it says, our hope was that we implement this proposal with understanding that the commissioners are willing to look at some pay increases. That should cover this expense for employees. I'm all for that. I just wondered, do you have a handle on how much money we're talking about there?
Our discussion so far through the committee has been two to 3%. Cost of living, basically looking and, and then seeing where that, you know, what that does. We've passed around the same thing that the commissioners talked about last year, whether it's a. The commissioners determine whether they want to do a straight COLA or whether they want to do the percentage to the department head's elected officials and let them deal with it and, and combine the COLA.
Okay, so your idea being with, with employees that we have today, if we pass on this. That when July 1, when the retirement goes up $215, we're going to take care of them, right?
That's our hope.
We, that's okay. But then from then on, any new employees know that they're going to have to pay the $215 a month. So they're okay.
No, it's per year.
Per year.
Yeah, they'll come in at whatever step and grade that they hire. Yeah, they'll come in at whatever step and grade that they hire them at and there, there won't be any discussion.
And every employee is gonna move forward paying, paying the increase.
Okay, the only other thing I want to add is, oh, go ahead.
All I have to say is, when you made the comment, every employee, that's not exactly true. And here's kind of a caveat here. The elected officials cannot be required to pay it or the first deputies until we renew their salary schedule a year from now before the next election because they are under a, a salary situation or contract on a four-year period. So if, it's a choice. If you wanted to participate and pay your portion, you could. But we cannot require the elected officials or, or first deputies to do that at this time according to the county attorney.
Okay, well, the only other comment I have, yeah, I think it's a great proposal and I just want to commend you and the committee. And I bet this is the last time you'll ever volunteer.
Well, that's the other thing is, we would like to keep going for a little while.
Oh, okay, great.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say too, that Commissioner Mangle and your question, whether, whether it's good for the employees or not, but it, I think it's good for the commissioners to have those extra steps too, because it'll give you an opportunity to decide if you want to give a half step, which is now a full step, and, you know, because we've looked at that in the past, giving half steps, and it's just, for our office, that half step is, is not easily administrable. So for, for that, I think that it makes it simpler for you guys too, if you're looking at potentially giving increases.
I think it would benefit also the, the employees in that maybe you could be more generous with giving away a half step as a, as opposed to a full step. So I think it would give you a little more ammo, I guess, in keeping good employees. And making sure that you're rewarding the, the good people that are working for you.
So this is kind of where the question was, part of the problem is we don't know how to move through the steps. And so that, that still conversation that sort of needs to be had because obviously they come before you with pay increase requests. And it's been a long issue of, well, what, what does bump an employee from this step to this step to this step or whatever? And so that's not really been hashed out, you know, as of yet.
Are you looking for action?
Well, I'm looking for any more comments and probably looking for action, yeah.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I'll throw my comment, and I thank you, Dossie, and I really like all four of these. Back to the half-step program, what I would support is back to the splitting the percentage where, and the, the splitting the steps allows the department heads to have a con, a constant step increase. So everybody knows that you can adjust to the cost of living. And it may be a one step. It may not be enough, but it's something. But it gives the department heads, what I would like to see, the opportunity to take the other, could be half step, and give that in merit raises.
So this is in relation to the COLA then?
So, I mean, that's not part of this plan, but this, with these four answers, especially in number, number three, the, the half-step thing, it gives the possibility still out there that the department heads could take a percentage if we allow two percent, three percent, whatever, and give more or at least an equal amount to a merit raise as opposed to an automatic COLA raise. I know that's been a debate with Dossie in, in the group, but I still feel that the people that, and if everybody in your department is great, then you're, you get to even it out within your department. But if you have one or two that stand out, that really deserve and need to move up, then you can move them up two steps. If, if, so anyway, thanks. So I, I like it.
Brian?
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna piggyback on what Lloyd said. I, I think the idea of spreading those steps up was along those lines because, you know, it's year by year, we don't know where we're at. You don't know if it's gonna be any raises or, you know, laying people off or, or whatever, but in a good year, you might say, we're gonna give ten percent or five percent or whatever it is. And that low step could still be the inflation that a department head or commissioners could pass that around to, to everybody, or everybody gets that amount. You know, in a, in a mediocre year, I guess. And then a good year, it's, it's commissioners saying, well, we're gonna give five percent raises. That difference, a department head or commissioner kick, like Commissioner Tilden said, reward based on merit, those employees that are deserving of that. And so that's the concept I like, and I think majority of the committee, I think, was, was working towards that. But that was the basis of that step split is so that you could do that. A little bit of cost of living plus be able to do that.
Now, will this help solve problems that you're getting with new applicants then, do you, do you think?
The one item on the road bridge for sure, well, that will help us. I'm not gonna say it's all the way there, but it's the step in the right direction for road bridge. I would say my, my custodial staff too. It's definitely a help for us. I'm not, I'm not sure you'd get an, an answer from anyone that says, what would be to where the employee feels they need to be, but this is a step, you know, this is, this is better than we were. I mean, you know, if this were a past, we're still in a better spot than, than we were even a year ago, so.
Anything else? What's your two pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, we approve the plan or proposal.
I'll second that.
Moving second. Is there further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Most carries.
And again, Dossie, thank you.
Thanks to the committee for.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I know you're not done. Unless you quit. We did, we, we approved for everything but the accessory department.
It's good we had your input though.
We did have it on the, on the committee.
Mr. Chairman, I got one thing, and I'm not sure this is appropriate, trying to bring it, bring it up, but we got this handout on the church premium. And I've never seen this before, but we're doing something wrong. I mean, you know, the deductibles we have and our premiums, which, I mean, the highest in the state.
Well, that, that's also on our.
Mike, there's a.
Yeah, we have to look at what the employee pays.
Right.
Versus what we pay.
We're wondering about turning out water fountains on.
You have to take all of your dollars.
Everyone else is doing it, so. Be good just turn the water fountains on.
Oh, I got, I got where you're coming from.
See what I'm saying?
Since you couldn't get us the bottle filled in ones.
So really, when we look at this, our county has some pretty darn good insurance.
Okay, all right. I mean, I just. Yeah, I understand. I've, I've never had it explained to me like that, but I just looked at it and went, holy.
Yeah, it does look, but when, when you actually compare the, the cost of what it costs and employee for their premiums, plus what it costs them for their deductible.
Cost to put in for their deductible and what they're paying on the premium.
Or if they have, you know, either.
Yeah. Okay, I got.
So you need a resolution number on it?
For the retirement portion, because it changes the benefits.
Just.
Okay, so Colleen, what you're saying is like, just, just take that. So just take Albany for example, and their employees are paying eight hundred and sixty-seven bucks a month. So that's being added into their, what their, what their deductible is also.
No, so you're gonna take that eight hundred and sixty-seven, you're gonna take that times twelve months.
Right.
And then what is the?
That'll go to the blue file, wherever the blue file is.
Their deductible left a lot. Those deductible is gonna be added to that.
Right.
Right, yeah, okay, I, I got you.
Okay, so just easy, eighty-six hundred dollars, say, is what their premiums are that they pay, plus they have to come up with eleven hundred for their deductible. So they're at nine thousand dollars out of pocket.
Out of pocket, I got you.
Okay.
Thank you for the information. I understood that.
And I, and I apologize, that was nineteen, the end of nineteen, and I just didn't want to put out all the words for new data.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the first time I ever saw this, and I'm like.
Sure, some of it's changed. We would have shared it in nineteen, but that was two years ago.
You, you think my mind?
You don't understand how long it took me to find it.
Well, we're gonna be waiting for Joy on the, we don't have any public hearing, so she can step back in.
Well, Hans, when did, when did your trip take off?
July fifteenth.
You got all your, all your ties flat and fly ties and all that good stuff?
I'm getting there, getting there. I've acquired a lot of, a lot of stuff.
Oh, I imagine.
Guns and bullets.
Oh, you got, you got a gun to take?
Yeah, I just wanted, yeah, I didn't need, but I, but I needed.
I was under the impression that the guy that took you on the float supplied you with, with like a, you got a shotgun.
We're going, we're doing our, so.
They're unguided.
Unguided.
Yeah, but I mean, the guy's flying in, he's not, he's just flying in, he's not providing any.
He's outfitting you, but not guiding.
Boats and tents and things like that that we can rent for him, but.
Oh, okay.
We'll take our, we'll just fly with our own guns.
What'd you, what'd you buy for a bear gun?
A Glock ten. Good job. Yeah.
I got, I got, I got a Glock forty-five, which is very close.
Still, what's that, the, that old thirteen or fifteen?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. I liked them because I figure I might not, I can't, I can't hit anything with a pistol, but fifteen or sixteen shots, maybe I'll hit something.
Well, yeah, I, I tell you, I used to pack a, a long cold round.
Oh, yeah.
And they got to sit down heavy. I shot it pretty good. And then I finally got a Glock. And I figured, you know, worst case scenario, I'd fell down its throat and just keep pulling the trigger.
And they go through a lot. Hello, Kim.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're gonna move right forward. We're gonna move right into, I'm sure you're here for the, the Kodiak Minor Subdivision Improvement Agreement.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so what we do, we, we request that you approve that, and I know all of you had a chance to look at that. That has been looked at by Joy, by Public Works, by the county attorney. They all approve it. They think it's complete. They have no problems with it. Should you approve it, will ask that it be recorded. Of course, then after that, we have the final plat, as you know, for that subdivision. And if that final plat is approved, just so you know, we will hold that until all those subdivision improvements have been made. And of course, that improve, that includes having agencies tell us that, yes, everything has been, has been made to their standards. And that's, and that's Public Works. I can't, I can't remember all the details, but I'm sure it's Utilities, I'm sure it's Road, it might be Northwest Water. But we will hold that final plat, should you approve it, till the improvements are made.
Mr. Chairman, I got one quick question before we get started on this. Some of the improvement plans that we've done in the past require like a letter of credit from a bank or something like that. Basically stating that the applicant has to work with all the newies.
Yeah, so, good question, Commissioner Tilden. So my understanding is with this improvement agreement, that the applicant is, is doing the builds. And so they're planning to put all of the improvements in, knowing that they have to be in and they have to be approved before that final plat can be recorded and lots, and lots can be, and before lots can be sold.
All right. Does anyone have any questions on this? I would like one.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the subdivision improvements agreement for Kodiak Minor Subdivision as presented.
Second.
Moving second. Further discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Most carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is approving the final plat for Kodiak Minor Subdivision.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this property is in the zoning district GRP, the planning area is Powell. We did receive the final plat application for the subdivision first of February this year. And the requested action, of course, is to approve this, this minor subdivision. It's five lots. One lot, one point six acres, one lot, just over five acres, one lot, six point one acres, one lot, eight point six acres, and one lot, eight point six acres. Two lots, I should say, two lots, eight point six acres, all for residential use. We have to find this as a minor because it is five lots. And it is located on the south side of County Lane Eight and a Half. It's just a little over two miles straight east of Powell. You see that final plat in Figure One. I did mention it's in the GRP. The lots as proposed are consistent with that zoning district. Neighboring land uses are primarily agriculture. However, there are also a number of subdivisions located around this, primarily to the west and east. This parcel, Lot One, does have an exist, has an existing residence and some outbuildings. The other four proposed lots are vacant. It's not within a mile of Powell, so municipal review is not required. This, of course, is not a public hearing. We've not received any public comments on this. Planning and zoning approved the sketch plan on December fifteenth of last year. That the county commissioners approved the sketch plan for the subdivision on January nineteenth of this year. You had a chance to see, and of course you remember all the, the conditions that you had when you looked at the sketch plan. The only condition that has not been met yet, but that will be met, is having that Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act, that statement show up on the final plat. That's not been done yet, but we will make sure it will be done.
Excuse me, Kim, what, what, what statement was that?
What's that?
What was the statement that's gonna, you were going?
Um, it's the, it's the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act.
Yeah, I just had that down.
Yep, yep. That will be, it's not on there yet, but it will be on the final.
What is it?
What is that?
Yeah.
Well, it, it, I mean, I don't remember verbatim, but basically what it says is, you know, government entities, I'm sure is what it applies to, can't find somebody who's farming or ranching in violation of like our nuisances for doing what is commonly concerned, felt to be best practices for farming and ranching. Yeah, they can't be found to be viola, in violation for nuisance. Yeah, and that is required to be. And that, that's required to be on all final plats, according to our regs. Mr. Chairman, the plat review committee looked at this electronically into February of this year. There were some corrections and changes made. We, then we, we got the corrected version in early March. And along, we have some findings that you had a chance to see, and we had only two conditions. And again, one is that no talking about the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act. And I'll happy to answer any questions.
Quick question on your staff finding number fifteen. And there's no note, not requiring any note to be on the final plat pertaining to domestic water. Cause there was, there was evidently no analysis done.
Yeah, there was, yep, there was no analysis done and, and we didn't, we didn't require any. I, I want to say this property will, I can't remember, Commissioner Tilden, I want to say this property is planning to get Northwest Water.
I'm seeing head shaking from.
Is that, is, okay, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and just so you know, there, there was some discussion in P and Z about whether or not a note regarding that no analysis was done. And our department thought that it wasn't necessary because they were planning on Northwest Water.
Well, and that's why I asked the question, because you know, when we have a water analysis and a water is not good water or potable water, then we put that on the plat.
Yes.
And so that's why I asked the question.
We're hoping that Northwest Water is potable. Okay.
And our regs only talk about water analysis really needed if somebody is planning for wells. In this case, they're not.
Did you have anything to add?
All I wanted to say is, P and Z is concerned, even when Northwest Water is proposed, this kind of landowner will choose to use it. And so they, they would like, looking forward to see conditions on the plats, even where central water is proposed. That says no water analysis was conducted or, you know, or that well shall, you know, require state engineer permitting. You know, even a state engineer permit, I don't think requires water quality analysis. So they're just concerned, they want the, the future landowner to be put on notice that if they were to choose a well, that we don't know what the water quality is. That was just something that they were, right now, I can't really impose that unless it's something that you want conditioned on the plat, so.
Okay, moving forward. Lloyd?
I, I'm good with everything, other than it is something different on the application, and I'm not sure why we did it, and I have lots of a problem, but we don't.
I, um, I'm good with everything, other than it is something different on the application, and I'm not sure why we did it, and I have lots of problem, but we don't. You don't have staff conditions anymore, you have Board of County Commissioner approval on conditions. And then, and then, and then the separate, we're used to have, uh, staff conditions, it's just staff recommendations, there's really.
Is that the difference between sketch plan and final?
I don't know. I've never known, never saw a section on Board of County Commissioner approval on conditions. You, I don't have a problem with the condition, just wondering why we have that instead of staff conditions.
Yeah, is it the last page where it says staff recommendations, and a lot of times it would say staff recommends conditions, is that?
Page five, it says Board of County Commissioners Approval Condition.
That was on your sketch plan, when you approved the sketch plan, those were the conditions that you approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Except for number two, yeah. Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, Kim, you got anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Or, you have any questions here?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, go ahead and approve the Kodiak Minor Subdivision Final Plat Review, Final Plat.
Second.
Moving second.
Second.
But it will not be signed until the, uh, subdivision improvement agreement has been.
Question, Mr. Chair, so, you know, this is an unusual way that the regs, it's not backwards in my opinion, but the regs say that the plat shall be approved, okay, and then they can start the construction. This construction really can't start till the plat is approved, which, if you'll know, there's some other subdivisions out there right now, where this is kind of being done backwards, but um, the, the problem is, approval to me means you're signing it. Now, if they go out and something changes, right, the road orientation changes, or something gets messed up, they're gonna have to come back to you and get approval for those changes, and you've already signed the plat, and I think you need to sign the plat, that shows that it's been approved. So that it's, it's, you know, legit, they can't record it by our rule, but it will be signed.
So maybe the motion could have a stipulation in it?
There's, I don't think it needs it, the plat's not gonna be recorded until the improvement agreement has, until it's been fulfilled. And that language is in the improvement agreement.
And I don't know that maybe you can approve it with the condition that you won't sign it until you, you know, maybe that's something, that would kind of be something I'd feel more comfortable with, if you would say, we approve this plat, but it will not be signed until all build improvements are done. You know, I don't know, maybe that's a question for Sorek, but I, I don't like having a signed plat saying, we're actually gonna put them away so they wouldn't accidentally get, you know, carried off and recorded. I'm just very uncomfortable with that, so.
My question would be, um, under the recommendation conditions, it it must, uh, meet the standards of Park County Development Standards, minimum subdivision requirements, which are part of the amended, are now part of the amended.
Well, you mean if it gets amended?
Right, so that should cover, until they meet those conditions that were amended in the subdivision, they, they don't meet number two.
The question is of the signature, I think. More so, I think if they come back with major amendments, anything minor, we can all recover, but if they came back with something major, they have to come before you. Um, the question, I think, is the signature on the plat, can it wait for signature until the build improvements are done, or should it be signed right away? Upon being presented in my letter.
Is it, is it valid without a signature?
I don't know, I mean, you're gonna have a resolution on approval.
We need some direction here, what you wanna, what you would feel most comfortable in, in us doing.
I mean, all we have is that a plat needs to be approved. So, I don't know that it says it has to be signed, I don't know the.
Mr. Chairman, isn't, isn't the improvements to agreement part of, now, part of the development regulations? Because we just approved that. Approval of this is, has a condition that they have to meet that. So if they don't meet the improvements, this is not valid.
Yeah, I mean, but the plat, the final plat is part of the subdivision improvement agreements, final plat, um, submittals. So, and then you can't start construction in the subdivision until the plat is approved. So, it, and, and I'm sorry, it's very convoluted in the regs, but you can read it two different ways, so. You know, we're caught, we're caught in this cactus point right now, we wanna do it right, we wanna make sure that they're protected, because their subdivision improvement agreement says, you know, this becomes in effect when it's recorded, but the final plat has to be approved as part of that. Um, but the plat won't be recorded, like, you can't report it, because once it's recorded, that releases those lots for sale, and we don't want to do that, so. It, it, I think it's tricky, um, and I don't know if it requires Brian Sorek to say if the signature means it's approved or not. To me, if you've approved it with the condition that it won't be signed until the build's complete and, uh, approved by the county engineer, it's still approved. There's gonna be a resolution, it'll be on the record, I don't know. I mean, you could sign it, and then if it ends up, they have changes, it's gonna come back and be re-approved, but I just don't want that thing getting carried off by accident. I mean, we're, we're, we're gonna put them away.
Haven't we, Mr. Chairman, haven't we approved similar things depending on conditions?
Yeah, there's the conditions.
And, and nothing is recorded until those conditions are met.
We haven't done it in this order previously.
I can't hear you.
We have not done it in this order previously, if you read the regs, it tells you two different ways. So we feel to be, um, in concert and aligned with the SIA, the subdivision improvements agreement, that we need to have a plat approved in order to make that subdivision improvement agreement active. So they walk away, they record the subdivision improvement agreement, that makes it enforceable, makes it ready to go, off they go, start building. And then you can't record the plat until those, the terms of the SIA have been fulfilled. Again, if they go off and they build, it's up to changes.
Hans, you got some, let's shed some light on this. I just have a question, how are we going to record an SIA without there being a subdivision? We, we in our office, uh, we don't have, we don't have a Kodiak subdivision that does not exist in the clerk's office right now. And it will not exist until the plat is filed. So, we are, we're going to look at it, and we're gonna probably, we're gonna record it to, uh, a township and range and lot number fifty-two in Farm Unit B. I mean, you know, something like that, and then, and then the landman, when they come in. So, for our processes, there's not such thing as a Kodiak subdivision, until that plat comes in and we file. Then we build that into our system.
Yeah, and unfortunately.
So my guess, wouldn't this just go under agreements, then it really wouldn't even be locked to any land?
Well, I would suggest, I would suggest that the landowner put a, put a, uh, a legal description in there of what their legal is now. And then at least a landman will be able to go back and find it in that township and range.
So you mean in the subdivision improvements agreement, there is a legal, I mean, there's.
Is there a, is there a legal that, there's a legal outside the thing?
It's in there, it's the list is.
This land is right there. But is it not yet?
I'm confused.
I'm confused, okay, all right, we're good, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, one quick comment here, back in reading the actual subdivision improvement plan. You know, uh, this covers it right here. Where it talks about, okay, they have these time limits, one year, the subdivision plat is approved, if the owner develops, say, will complete all the improvements with the timeframe specified, the county shall automatically revoke the subdivision permit. That is saying that if they don't do the improvement, then the actual final plat is revoked.
Okay, so now my question for you is, how does that happen?
I don't know, that's why I asked the question.
I mean, that's a very strong statement, which we've all contemplated in my office, so let's pretend they go through, cause this has happened before, and the improvements are not installed. And they even get, they even get an extension, and they still don't do it. Now, what is automatically revoking a permit mean? Does that mean we just write on the plat, revoked, you're done? Or do we have to go through a process to revoke something, because in our rules, if you wanna revoke something, you have to go through a public hearing to do it, potentially. And I don't know if that's the same.
Well, who, who, who wrote this, did this come out of your office?
That can't, that came out of the regs directly.
Okay.
That is from the regulations. It's very confusing, like, staff has been poring over the language in both of these SIAs. And, and working, like, Brian's, like, we need to discuss, because we're concerned about how it's been handled, it's, it's just a tricky situation with the subdivision.
How did we handle Winchester, cause that one's been on the books for ten, fifteen years.
Um, they had done, their first one was recorded, and they were, they did the build out after. The next ones were build improvements, and then we weren't bringing the plats to you until after the improvements, but now we understand that that should be done before. It depends on where you were getting the regs, so we think it should be done, because they have to record that subdivision improvement agreement, and part of that is the plat. So we feel like they should be done, almost simultaneously, that's why we're doing it this way today, because that, you need plat approval to start construction, that is clear, so.
But I'm, I'm comfortable with language in the, uh, improvement agreement, and we'll deal with automatic when, if that time comes. So, moving forward, any further discussions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got one other quick question, I'm sorry to take so long there. But number three, under the, uh, improvement agreement, says the owner developer further agrees that the clerk to record may reject the recording of deeds or contracts. Colleen, down in your office, do you have any red flag mechanism that if this applicant sells a, a piece of property, and the terms of this agreement have not been complete, there's nothing, it's gonna wave a red flag down there, you're just.
We smile and file.
Smile and file, I like that, that's good, that's good.
Colleen? I don't understand that, because if someone comes in with a deed for Lot Two of Kodiak subdivision, and you don't have a Kodiak subdivision, there will be a red, there will be a red flag.
Well, we wouldn't file, we would question that.
We would question it because subdivision isn't already placed.
Potentially reject that.
Like, when you got five land people, I'm not sure that we could automatically catch everything if it came through that way.
I think we, potentially, we would.
I, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, that's.
I believe that we would.
Yeah, I think too, it will get caught in the assessment's office, when they get in the, whoa. Um, the other thing, though, is too, this is another catching point in the regs, you know, where we say that the clerk's office will do something. I mean, we, that's a problem, you know, for our regs to say, oh, well, the clerk's office, they don't have a clue.
We don't, we don't, we don't enforce anything, we don't make sure anything's, uh, the only thing we watch for is, correct me if I'm wrong, legal description, um, signatures, notarization, um, you can bring in a picture of your hand, but it notarized, and we'll record it, we don't care.
So that's difficult.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Motion carries, fingers up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But, yeah.
They took my money.
Yeah, well, that's what he said, he was like, all right.
They cashed it.
Yeah, yeah. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, yeah. Should be built or something else. Take care. All right, next up, Park County Clerk, going runner approval to put out bid for health insurance consultant.
We received an email from, uh, an individual who had an individual interested in becoming, possibly becoming Park County's health consultant. So we presented the information to this health, safety, and wellness group, a proposal from that consultant. After discussion with the group, they decided this should be discussed with the board, who should make the decision on whether we should put out a request or proposal for a consultant, for consultant services here in Park County. Our current consultants, USI, have provided services since twenty, two thousand eleven. They have continued to give us great service over the past ten years with no fee increases. They have gone to bat on some very large claims and saved the county many dollars. They bid out the stock loss annually, report monthly on large claims, report on funding versus cost monthly, specific insurance reporting, teledoc utilization report, and other matters that we may need help with. They work with the County Health and Wellness Committee to help the group make the most cost-efficient decisions with regards to the health plan. USI is presently working with the group, putting information together regarding an optional plan, in case the board is wanting to place a small fee on the employees for their insurance. So I, as the clerk, would recommend that we do not put it out for bid. Um, um, we, uh, have a great working relationship with our USI, and so if I have any pull, that's what I would like.
Well, I guess, I guess I, I question that, I mean, if we've been with, USI's been with us for ten years, going on ten years, and they haven't had any fee increases?
Nope.
Then maybe they're charging us too much to start with.
Um, actually, they charge a flat rate, many of the consultants will charge a flat rate.
What I'm saying is if that, if that amount that they started with ten years ago, I mean, I can't, I haven't seen any, any outfit that their costs haven't gone up. So that's where, that's where I'm coming, I just, I think it, it makes, I mean, I, I check my insurance, I, I, I rebid my insurance with my business, with my auto, I rebid it every two or three years, just to, you know, I, I hate to say this, but to keep them honest and keep them on their toes, and
Am I?
They come back, come back with the, a good price, then we know we're getting a good price, a good deal.
Thing, the thing I think you have to remember with health insurance versus other insurances, and this is a, a form of our health insurance plan, a part of our health insurance plan. If you put that out to bid very often, people will not look at you anymore, because you will, you're not willing to change, you're willing to just look at prices, and you're not willing to see their side of it. Now, I can tell you, USI is a flat rate consultant firm, many consultant firms are broker related. They'll charge you a flat rate, plus, uh, five, uh, two to five percent on whatever your claims are for that year. So if we have a total of a million dollars in claims for a year, they will be asking us a check for a check for the two percent of that million dollars. So that's the other thing, you have to watch out for consultants versus brokerage versus, and, and they all kind of play a different game, because in the brokerage area, they don't have to come forth and tell us that, it's not required by law.
No, I said, I got, I got Lloyd here first.
Oh, excuse me.
So what is their flat rate fee?
Twenty-five hundred dollars a month. We've had since twenty-eleven.
So, twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Thirty, thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand a year.
No, my question. No, I was just gonna say, I think where Lee was coming from on a thing, if they were starting out charging us thirty thousand dollars eleven years ago, then they were over, overcharging us then, if they're charging the same thing today.
Well, you have to remember, uh, and like I said, I don't know all the ins and outs of this, I'm not a consultant, I'm not a thing. But I want you to remember back to when we did hire them, the mess they had to clean up. The things they had to help us with, Maritane Health, to get our monies back that we lost in that whole situation. So I'm sure that's probably why they may have charged that flat fee at the beginning, but I honestly don't know.
Yeah, Colleen, I guess, I guess maybe you took what I was saying out of context as far as, as bidding my insurance, I bid, I, I ask, not, I'm not saying we're bidding our insurance, I'm saying we're bidding the service that they're, they're, USI's providing this, I try to, I try to shop for the best, the best value. And that's, you know, you, again, I, 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 about every two or three years, I'm shopping out my auto insurance, my, my liability insurance, shopping out where I'm getting, whatever I'm getting. And so I just think, I don't see how it, if they're the, if they're the best value, and they're the best bet, they're gonna come out with the best price.
So, Mr. Chairman, then on the percentage part, I mean, I know it varies from year to year, but we always have at least a hundred thousand. Okay, million?
Go to a million.
That's a lot.
So basically, where I'm going with this is, I feel that this really should fall under our procurement policy. Meaning if it's over fifty thousand.
I don't think it can because of the regulations and things like that, like I said.
It's a service to the county, and any service to the county that we're hiring done should be bid. And we may be able to pass from one year to maybe every other year, but, I mean, we put that out there for a reason. That any service or goods vendor to the county or service needs, if it's over fifty thousand. That any service or goods vendor to the county or a service needs, if it's over fifty thousand dollars, needs to be put out to the public.
Then I guess I would recommend that we have, um, USI on the phone and, and table this discussion and something.
No, I don't think we need to have USI. I mean.
Well, there's reasons why you don't go out for bid.
There could be, there could be another company that would provide the exact same service as USI. That is, is, it was willing to bid this. I mean, I, I understand what you're talking about with the brok, you know, brokerage versus the consultant. There might be another consultant company out there that is willing to bid this. So, I mean, I understand we've had a great relationship with them, you know, for eleven years, but I don't see, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around why we would not bid out a service that is being provided to the county. That's what I'm trying to wrap my head around. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, as part of these conversations in the health insurance committee meetings and, so I, I'm obviously, I'm one of the people who's like opposite of a lot. I, I believe we should be going out for bid on our health insurance, on, on whatever service it is. And I know other counties do it sometimes. Um, you know, we were tasked with not leaving any stone unturned, right? Where there might be budgetary savings for the county, this is just another stone. The one thing that's kind of missing for me is just, you know, what are other counties doing? We, we can't, we're not the only county that has this service. What are the other counties? Who do they have and how much are they paying? You know, I'd like to kind of have that information before we go out for bid, if we go out for bid, because it'd be nice to just kind of see what, what's going on out there. You know, we, we've talked about this more than just the consultant. We've talked about going out for the insurance and the, the stop laws and all that stuff, you know? So we, we looked at a lot of different aspects, but for whatever reason, this will kind of bump to the surface all of a sudden. But anyway, I would still like to see a comparison.
I think that needs to be all part of it. I definitely, I, I agree that, that seeing what, what's happening elsewhere. I guess I'm, what is your concern? What, what is the harm in going out for RFP on this?
Uh, on this one, I feel, uh, I feel that we're not getting a true answer. I feel that we're not comparing apples to apples. We're comparing apples to oranges because as consultants, they do not have to come out and say that they charge brokerage fee.
I, I'm, I understand there's a difference between consultants and brokerage firms, but I'm guessing that USI is not the only consultant in, in the United States. So if, yeah, and if, if, if a proposal comes in front of us and it says this is a straight consultant fee and we're going to charge you X amount of dollars per month and that's what you're going to pay? I think our health and wellness committee is smart enough to figure out the difference if, of, of a brokerage coming, proposal coming from a consultant. And if a, if a brokerage, if a brokerage makes more sense or doesn't make sense, they reject it. I just, I don't see that we're automatically going to go move, change, go to a different company just because it's going out for an RFP. That's, you know, where I'm at on it. Joe?
Uh, yeah, it's coming on what, where Lloyd was coming from. And I understand where you're coming from with our procurement policy and all that, but we just, we just bypassed that policy today when we renewed the contract with the health provider at the one fourth percent. We automatically renewed that. We didn't put it out for bid. So I'm saying we do, we have established a precedent in the past. You know, our accountants, for example, last time this year when they did our, our audit, we didn't put that out for bid again because we worked with them in the past. We built a good rapport with them. They gave us this good solid price, so we went ahead and accepted it.
That would be, I, I don't deny that we do that. It doesn't make it right either. And in our policy, it gives us the option. We don't have to go with a low bid.
No.
It's the best value to the, but it, it does, in my opinion, it does keep everybody honest and their pencil sharp.
Well, it does.
From time to time, and there may be exceptions such as the healthcare provider and the consultant in this, it's, it may not need to go every year. And that's something we knew when we wrote the procurement policy, that there would need to be, it was a, a work in progress. We may need to have some exceptions and some adjustments to it. And going out to a different, our advertising for our, our banker, for instance, may not be right to do every single year. But because we do have one and because of the way we've done things in the past, I don't think, I don't agree with that, that that's, just because that's the way we've done it, that's makes right.
Okay, well, the, the only other thing I'd like to say is these folks, as Colleen pointed out, they came, came in. I don't know if you're aware of the problems that the county had with their self-insurance. Because we were handling it in-house and didn't watch it and all of a sudden, the whole world came to an end one morning. And the commissioners had to go in reserve for two hundred and three million dollars to build up the insurance fund.
Yeah, I've heard stories.
And that's when they hired these folks on. And they have, they worked with the county now for eleven years. They built an hell of a rapport. They got in on the ground floor. They know all of the pitfalls with our insurance and our health and wellness program here at the county level. And I don't think their price is exorbitant. So I would certainly, definitely vote to retain them. Especially since their price isn't going up.
Mr. Chairman, I, I not denying that they, they shouldn't, they aren't the best people, but I think we ought to the taxpayers to at least look.
I mean, if that's the pleasure of the board, that's fine, but I, you know, I, I, I think we have established a precedent where we don't have to do that.
We have established it, but if, if I recall, um, the sheriff on occasion looks at other companies to see what kind of price they can provide for the, uh, for the health company.
Well, you know, that's, that's possible. We never send out an RFP or put it out for bid. That's all. And, you know, and I mean, road and bridge, buildings and grounds, they do it all the time, like road and bridge. Uh, you know, we use Harris Trucking forever. We've had a number of projects with them where it's been over the five thousand dollar threshold. But we have such a good rapport with them. Brian can call up, pick up the phone and say, hey, can you fix the culvert on such and such a road? And they get out there and do it.
So, Colleen, is your concern, are you concerned that, that USI is going to just walk?
No.
Okay. Call for Dossie.
The only thing that I, we can certainly go out for it if we want to. I think USI has worked well with us. I have no complaints about them whatsoever. My concern is our ability, after dealing with health insurance and my business for many, many years, our ability to compare apples to apples when we get these RFPs in. Because the wording is extremely, and we can do it. I just don't know what our process will be or who will get to, to help us work through it. Because when they start talking about the percentages and the brokerage things and on what and, and what's our history and trying to put all that together. I just know that it's going to be a little more cumbersome than looking at a, a twenty-five hundred dollar or a twenty-seven hundred dollar or a three thousand dollar monthly. I think it's going to be a lot more cumbersome than that.
And maybe we decide.
Ready for that.
Maybe we decide that a brokerage isn't in the way we want to vote.
I just, I want to be sure we have enough help to make the determination.
If you have a company that comes in and says, I'll do it for two thousand a month and they've got a track record of, that we can research. I mean, it's worth looking at. That's all I'm going to.
Right.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just, I guess, wherever you decide, we decide, but who's going to, who's going to do the bidding? Who's going to, you know, that's, that's my, that's my question.
And that's what Dossie said.
Back on Dossie's question is, who's going to do the bidding? Is it going to be the health and wellness committees, going to be the commissioners? Going to be a recommendation from the health and wellness committee up to the commissioner? Do you guys run with it? Or is there going to be two sets of interviews? I think that those are things that you might want to, I, I think about it. And again, your decision is your decision. But, um, the process, I always, I always think about process, just like this Kodiak man or something. I, that's what I think about while I'm sitting back here listening.
Yes, Chairman, I.
Process going to be.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with, with what they're saying here. And we're going forward. If we choose to do this, I would say it's, it's definitely not going to be like opening, pick up something, go off and then come back in the afternoon. And I have, I would suggest just that, and that would be the, what health and wellness committee look it over, come back with recommendations.
Commissioners.
It to the commissioner, to the commissioners. The other.
If we get to that point.
Yep.
I'll be completely transparent about this. This, this all came about because I had a client who offers this kind of service. He said, I'd be glad to look at Park County's program and, uh, offer my opinion on it. And that led to this question, and I don't care whether he gets it or not. If it comes down to his company, I'm out of it. I'm not going to vote on it. But I think that if there's, if there's, it just, just makes sense to me to, to look at this every, every once in a while. Ten years is a long time. There's a comfort level there and agreed, you do get comfortable working with somebody, but is it, is it the best value for the county?
Back to Julie's point, how hard, difficult would it be to find out what other counties and how, how often they shop?
Back to Colleen, she's asked that question a few times with the county clerk.
And the answer was?
It changes. Some counties have had the same insurance and the same for.
And they never vetted.
And never vetted and they don't vet. They, it, it's a preference on that board and that and who they're working with. It's, each county has their own.
Put your pin in the areas.
Yeah, but just, I, I agree, you know, the, the procurement that usually needs to go out to bid. It, it helps the taxpayers and they, and you're talking about what, what to put in the bid. Well, if the bid actually was written in a way that they have to reveal that they are a brokerage. And if we put that actually in the bid for them to come in, the only problem that I, you know, like, we've got a local preference discount. It might end up costing us more in that direction too. So, you know, there's, there's lots of different things and I, and I think both sides are right. I think, uh, I think, uh, just keeping, uh, the flow going would be the easy way to do it. But if there is an opportunity to save the county some money, but there is also the turnaround where it might end up costing us more for the local preference.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to say one, one last thing. I mean, like I said, uh, they came in right when the county had their catastrophes. They did a marvelous job. We built a good rapport. I've worked with them. Colleen or anybody in her office with a question can pick up the phone twenty-four hours a day, probably and get an answer to something very quickly. They're, from what I've seen, they're good people. So I'm going to go ahead, probably won't fly, but I'm going to make the motion that we go ahead and approve USI.
Well, we don't have to do that. What they could, the, the question on the table right now is, and it doesn't, it would require, it's, it will, it would require action to put out an RFP for our health consultant services. So no action.
Okay.
No action, I mean, no, no motion means we just don't do anything. Lloyd?
Then therefore I would like to make a motion to put out a RFP for health insurance consultant.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
One final point of discussion. I, I just think we have a potential here. You know, we're talking twenty thousand bucks a year.
Thirty.
So, how much is it, Colleen?
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty a year. The difference between what they're charging anybody new is coming in is going to be very minimal. Right? I would, extremely minimal. And I think you stand the potential of opening up a huge can of worms that could cause us a lot of problems down the road. Burn out a whole lot of money.
So the question, I understand if we're talking about thirty thousand, but what would it, what if, and I'm just playing devil's advocate here. What would happen, what would if a company, new consulting company comes in and says, hey, maybe you need to look at this and this is going to save the county X amount of dollars that hasn't been, we haven't been, hasn't been presented to us before.
Well, you know, I know, I know, your, your point is very well taken, but USI has come to us in the past. I know with a number of years ago, they came to us and maybe we should bid this out. Maybe we should try something else. So we did. We took the whole thing out of the bid. And it was a commission decision at that point in time to stay self, self insured, but they're coming up with no ideas all the time.
Okay, Mr., I, I, I agree with you, but what if this person comes back with a flat rate, the same, but a percent difference? Now you're not talking thirty thousand dollars. We may be talking a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars.
So what, you mean a percent on our, on our overall claim?
Yes. Less.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not paying that now.
We don't pay that now.
We don't pay.
We're paying none.
None.
We pay thirty thousand dollars a year.
Period. And that's it.
I thought that was a percentage rate.
No.
No.
No, that's different.
No. And that's what Colleen was trying to explain, is a lot of companies will come in with a, with a base rate.
They don't have to tell us that they're brokers.
Yeah, brokers. They'll come in at a base rate and then in the final print, it'll say they get a percent of any claim.
I find it extremely hard to believe that anyone would sign a contract with a company that has a hidden cost that, that they don't tell you about and they come out and charge. Doesn't happen. So, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't sign on it. And a company couldn't, you couldn't, wouldn't, I don't see how a company could bring a contract to you and not disclose what they're going to charge. So.
Well, they got to disclose it. It may, it may be in very fine print, way down at the bottom.
And we were.
But it's in there.
At some point in time, I know, I understand that there's, this is, might be a daunting task of looking at different proposals, but someone had to look at USI's proposal years ago. Again, more.
More.
We'll bring more. We'll bring more back.
You need higher hand for elephant.
Contracts.
We might, we might. All right, well, there's a motion on the, on the floor to, uh, put the, uh, health consulting services, an RFP out for health consulting services. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Hmm, thanks, guys.
We, we already know who you're going to vote.
I'm going to vote yes, put it up for RFP.
Again, I'd still like to see a survey done.
I did not declare conflict. I declare conflict if, if, if the company that, if the company that I'm. I understand, Mr. Chairman, that you just disclosed that it, that this came about because of your client. Would you, so you consider that a conflict on me putting it out? I'm just, I'm just bringing that up. I. And I stated that if that client's company bids on and it submits an RFP, I will not be bidding, I will not be voting on whether to accept that RFP or not. Okay?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that would be a big conflict now.
No, I, yeah, no.
Yeah, I don't.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll tell you, I thought this past, y'all made a big mistake.
We've done that before. We've done that before. Colleen?
Um, okay, so with this approval now, what I'll do is I'll move forward with Brian's story of working on the RFP. And then do you want to see the RFP or you want me to just go ahead and put it out there once I get approval from the county?
I'd like to see. I think we all should see it. See what it's asking for. And I have no, I have absolutely zero problem in asking for exactly what's being provided to us.
Right.
It's a consulting service. It's a consulting service on a self, self insured program.
I, I, as making the motion, Mr. Chairman, I agree. Like, I think if this services work well for us, we should base it on those lines.
All right, though, that was easy. Okay, up next, we have Point Cafe owner, Virginia Scott, to discuss the cafe, Point Cafe renewal lease agreement.
So I just, I would like to re, renew it for twelve months.
Okay, we have the current lease in front of us.
I have actually.
I did put it in there. Uh, we had an extension, um, and she's paying two hundred and fifty a month.
Mr. Chairman.
Contract, her lease is up May first, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we've, uh, we've had a lot of bumps since we started this, um, between COVID and, and other things. Memory serves me, the initial contract was a trial basis.
Yes.
I have, my feelings at that time was a very reasonable, if not minimal, rate. With you to come back and let us know how, you don't have to open your total books to us, but I mean, are you able to pay the going rate of, for the facility that you're in for Cody?
We were closed for nine months because of COVID and we, we only reopened January, uh, February fourth. At this stage, we're still.
You had a little time before that, though.
Yeah.
Before COVID.
Two months, two months before COVID. And then, then we were closed for nine and we've been open since February. So it's, we're, it's getting a little bit better. It was really slow at first, you know, people knowing that we're back and, um, so I think spring and summer will be really good. But right now I'm losing about two hundred and fifty dollars a week. But it's, it's, I know that's part of it.
Mr. Phil?
Yeah, what are, what are we charging now? Two hundred?
Two fifty.
Two, two fifty. I just throw it out as a recommendation and the point with being locked down for COVID is a very good point. You really haven't had an opportunity to see what the business will do.
Right.
You know, and when we entered in the original agreement with you, it was kind of our, you know, our feeling was that once you got up and going, if your business took off and was a viable business, yeah, we would bring it more up to, to the going rate in town. So my recommendation would be go ahead and renew it for six months. That's two hundred and fifty.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that one.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to extend the, renew the lease agreement for, at the current rate for six months. For that discussion?
Yeah, the only other discussion, did we get a second on that?
We did.
Okay. The only other discussion at the end of six months, uh, I'd like you to come back and say, okay, you know, you can raise me another hundred bucks. I can handle that or whatever.
Okay, that sounds fair.
Yeah. And, you know, I mean, we certainly want you to be successful down there, up there. Yeah, and you know, I mean, we certainly want you to be successful down there, up there.
Okay. But.
I, I wanna, I want you to be successful, too. My problem is using government property to subsidize private business in direct competition with private property businesses. Now, I went along with it originally just to provide a service for the county and the library and I, I still feel that we're competing with downtown businesses. I know it's a little bit different and it may not be, go to the same square footage as a business on Main Street, but it's still taking business away from local businesses, so. I'm not, I'm not in support, not that I don't want you successful, I'm more, I wanna support the local businesses more. So that's, that's my take. I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think if you are, it doesn't seem like it's really a business if you're losing 250 a week. So I think it's basically, we are providing sort of a service to the people who are up there subsidizing that service a bit to provide them a little bit more incentive to stay up there. So, you know, and it's, I think if, you know, if she starts making money, I mean, then maybe you can, you think about raising it up, but I mean, how much more can she really make, you know? So this might be just us providing a service for the populace by allowing her to have that there and, you know, and she's the one losing money out of instead of us, so I like the 250 for six months. And I, hopefully, you start making a profit out of it, but, you know, the business plan didn't work very good during COVID times.
No, it didn't.
So, I would agree that 250 seems fair and hopefully you can make something out of it. And then I think we can discuss maybe that we are competing against other people by offering a discount for her, but she's not making any money off this.
But.
I know one of our conditions was insurance, are you current with your insurance?
I don't, I don't feel that it's in competition with the other businesses because it is inside the library. It's not, you know, the people that come to the cafe are really people that are already in the library. Most people don't just come there as a restaurant of choice, it's just.
We can put it out for bid and see who else wants to lose 250 a month.
We have been there.
Been there, Donald.
See, I know.
Well, you know, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just wanted to quick comment closing. You know, and this lady trying to run that restaurant up there, and I understand your point, that's very well taken. But I mean, her hands are pretty well tied with the hours of operation, all those type of things.
Granted.
So, I mean, you gotta cut her a little slack, and basically, we're providing a service for the people that use the facility up there. They can come in, sit down, have a little meeting, have their coffee, have a sandwich or whatever, it's a service. And the county subsidized a bistro over the $260,000 a year forever.
Hans, if you have something? I just wanted to know, Mr. Chairman, is it, are you talking six months from the end of her current contract? Yeah, extended it from six months from when her lease expires in May.
May 1.
In May. It expires, so this, this lease would start May 1st. The extension would start May 1st. Thanks, Hans. Okay, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Next up, we're gonna, discussion to participate in the emergency rental assistance program. So, Susan's all over this, she's chomping at the bit. Susan and Dossie sat in on a call the other day with the Department of Family Services. There's some CARES funding, is it CARES or is it ARF now?
It's E R A P, ERAP.
ERAP, all right.
Is this new CARES or?
Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
Okay, so this is last CARES.
It's Fed money.
Okay.
It's stimulus money and it's, you take it away, I wasn't able to sit in on the call. Dossie.
Oh, okay.
Or Susan, whoever wants to.
Basically, it was the Department of Family Services on the phone, their director, and they are handling this for the state of Wyoming. Like I said, it's an emergency rental assistance program. And what they were requesting is, the money has been broken out per capita per county. Park County looks at somewhere around $74,000 for rental assistance or home assistance for people that were having problems during COVID. The problem that they're looking for is someone to run that program locally. They are not suggesting to use their DFS people. They wanted the county to either take it on ourselves and hire someone if we, unless we had an office person to do it and a desk and a computer and a time, or give it to an organization that we oversee, who would be willing to do all this work. They are supposed to be computer application only, but we've heard some different conversations about meeting with the people and landlords and renters and that type of thing, and it got extremely complicated. We had about 20 commissioners on the phone, I think we had 100 questions. It was not an easy situation. So, I know I asked Susan to do a couple of follow-up questions with the director on Monday because we had heard some rumors to some other effect of how much this would be for the county. They also talked about the fact that within this $74,000, there is some administrative money that can be used to pay that person and do the computer and provide the office, but they didn't have a rate at this time on the proportion of administrative fees that could be used. But this also has the same caveat as we had on the charitable organization funds, and that is, if it's given out wrong, we'll it back.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman, if I could. One question. Is there any other organization that's willing to step up the plate to do this if we don't?
It's co-Indy.
Not that we are aware of right now, we could, Susan and I could.
Why doesn't, I mean, the department, the money is distributed to the Department of Family Services? Why can't their local office do this?
We asked the same question.
A question was asked on, in the meeting, why is not DFS, and she hesitated him and her.
She dodged it.
Yeah. And after being, after listening to that call, my concern on your behalf would be if you do hire somebody to relinquish this money, how do we know these people even qualify?
Yeah.
I mean, DFS would be the best.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just really, I really did make these like, oh, look.
Do you see why I didn't go on the call?
So, Mr. Chairman, the, the money that if we were to do this
Yes.
is distributed to the family or the?
Landlord.
Landlord.
Well, it's, yeah, in most cases to the landlord through the application process. There are saying special conditions that it can be done directly to the recipient, not the landlord. And those are things that all have to be spelled out. You have to do a day or two of training to be the person that does this and understand the ins and outs.
So who would be applying for the, these funds? The landlord people that got stiffed on the red or the people that can't pay the rent?
People that can't pay the rent.
Colleen?
Haven't the churches been keeping track of that? I mean, could we get one of the?
We did talk about one of the churches that did several of the things through the charitable organizations. The problem is, in my mind, is we don't know, and maybe a church would be willing to step up and do this, but we don't know if it's a particular church in Cody, if everybody in Park County is gonna be willing to work through that church to get this. I don't know how that.
Well, what bothers me about it is, you know, looking at it is, again, if we're gonna be on the hook for it and we decide to let a church do it, then we're gonna have to oversee it. And you, I don't know why, I don't know why DFS is punting on this. I don't understand why they're putting it there, they've got the offices, they've got personnel. If they've got, if someone has to be hired, it should be hired by personnel. But I don't want to, I don't wanna turn this down when we have folks in Park County that could use this assistance. So, you know, I might reach out to Jeremiah and see if they've come up with anything anymore.
So Chairman, we have to let them know by tomorrow. I did receive an email, I did talk to Miranda down in Cheyenne. She said we have to have a dedicated office, a dedicated phone line with a person and administrative costs for that person would come out of the $74,000 they gave us. I said, so how do we determine what that's supposed to be?
There's not gonna be, there's not much left on the table.
Well, this is just the first year, they said they may do it the second year, is my understanding as well, they just didn't know.
I'm sorry, but.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, do they need the notification of yes, we're gonna do it, and also a notification of no?
Yes, we need to say either yes, we're gonna do it, or give them names of somebody that we may want to point to take care of.
What do we do if we don't have any names to submit?
We can tell them, excuse me, we're gonna do it then.
No, we're.
Who's gonna, who?
I'm trying to figure out what kind of motion to make here.
There's a name.
Who?
D S F.
Oh, okay.
There was another concern, so they're taking $4 million of this to set up a call center. So people can apply for this online. And what they're asking of us is to do this for people that can't get to a computer or, and that really confuses me in itself because I'm thinking of the library and thinking of, you know, workforce has computers there that people can get on to, so I'm really confused on why they're doing that.
Well, I can tell you why, but I won't tell you now.
They've had $180 million and they took 200,000 out of it and split it up into this low availability.
We need action.
No action means we don't have to take action, yeah, we do have to take action. They've asked us to give them an answer.
Are we going to do it alone, John? Yes or no?
Mr. Chairman, I move we take no, we don't do anything?
We just, then we don't.
At this time.
I.
And we recommend that.
I don't think.
Department of Family Services take care of themselves.
I'm sorry, I mean, I'm not wanting to step in on your motion, but I do not believe we need to make a motion to say no.
That's my question.
We don't have to make a motion to say no, we do have to tell them.
Okay.
Thanks, but no thanks. If we were going to proceed forward with some sort of action, then we would have to have.
You have reconsidered my motion.
Your motion was never even accepted. Yeah, that's, if you want to do that, you can make a motion that we.
You don't think we need one, no action's fine with me.
Then you got something. And I see it, I see this administrating on a yes or, I mean, on a no.
You still have to get it back on time.
We're good. It's just Brian and Greg.
And no suggestion for anyone else.
Yeah, like you said, Department of Family Services. I'm gonna call Rennie, I'll call Rennie and if I get some more details, more information before tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll let him know first thing in the morning, whenever.
Yeah.
Just shoot them an email and tell them, oh, thanks.
And to be perfectly honest, I wouldn't mind doing it if you, if you trust me to do it, but I'm just like, I, I am more concerned about the possibility of the county.
Just to be, just to be clear about this, we're not, our, our lack of action is not gonna keep the money from coming into this county. It's just, what we're just not offering is a, a service to help, you know, some of the applicants. One, I'm, I'm, I know there's gonna be a need for it in Park County. How, how great is the need, don't know, but there is gonna be a need. But two, out of all those folks that are, that need it, how many of them can't, you know, get to a computer or need assistance on a computer? And I think it's pretty, pretty small. If you go to, if you go to Albany County, Laramie County, Natrona County, I see the need being for something like this being, you know, significantly higher than in a, than a 28,000 population count. That's me. All right. Moving forward, moving right along. We've got, next up, we have Park County Landfill Manager, Greg Palmerstein, backed up by County Engineer Brian Edwards. You are, brother.
So I wanted to come based on some of the litter problems and the challenges that we've experienced over the past several months and getting ahead of the, getting ahead of the litter problem. One of the avenues or one of the approaches I see that can address that, at least in a small part, is bringing on a second lot attendant to the full-time position. Recently, a few weeks ago, we transitioned one of the two lot attendants to full-time and I think that's paying dividends. The individual seems much more engaged, much more willing to do what it takes to make things happen. And I think the second individual would also provide that feature and give us a little more flexibility about having someone available to send out to the Clark or the Paul landfill to pick up waste and be the kind of a foreman, if you will, on a better campaign, either Paul or Clark. This individual has worked for the landfill for some time, at different times. And I talked to him and asked him, you know, if he was interested in going full-time, he expressed, of course, expressed an interest. He also said that he wouldn't need the healthcare benefit, that he had his own healthcare and he was more than content with it, wanted to use that benefit.
So just for public certification, I mean, my education, what duties, what are the duties of a lot attendant?
Yeah, they're quite varied, you know, they're kind of a jack of all trades, maybe, you know, for lack of a better term. Though, being in charge of litter crew, litter pickers, when they're there, if litter crew's not there, they'll take, they'll fulfill that role when necessary. They help direct people within the landfill, kind of keep an eye on if people are dumping in the wrong areas. And we've had problems with that, that was one of the things that was brought to the attention by the.
DOJ?
DOJ, when they're out there, they found a five-gallon bucket of paint that was in the CND area. Unfortunately, you know, a lot of times these loads, especially with CND ways, comes in a very big load and people aren't completely honest with you about what they have in their load. And by having a presence down there, hopefully, somebody that's engaged and caring, they'll be able to spend a little more time, you know, policing those facilities. They'll also undertake things like, you know, helping with changing the oils or the fluids and any of the equipment, cleaning the shops and whatnot, just kind of, anything that needs done, kind of, of the individual. And then have the flexibility to, you know, a litter picker, a young person like we've had recently, you know, a high school student, you may not, you may not trust them to take and drive from Cody to Clark to pick up trash, you know, unsupervised, but you know, one of those lot attendants would be able to pull that run, takes me like that down there to help.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I'd just like that, too, you know, keep in mind the landfills operate, you know, six days a week, or at least the Cody landfill, six days a week. And, you know, just to try to cover that, staff that, you know, people being sick, somebody being out, you know, an injury or something like that, which has been a lot of that lately, just it's a real struggle to try to, try to keep that, I think, having, you know, a few more hours and having that, that presence is an option will really help us with some of our operational challenges.
Are your lot attendants cross-trained to be gate attendants?
They are, in fact, typically, the lot attendant will be there a half hour because the gate attendants are restricted to the number of hours at nine and a half, we're open 10 hours a day. A lot of tenant would typically fill that role of being the gate attendant for the first half hour of the day.
Got you. Okay, appreciate the info.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, quick, just, what, what exactly are you asking for?
Currently, we have one lot attendant that's full-time.
Right.
And one lot attendant that's part-time, three hours a week. I'm asking to transition that part-time lot attendant to a full-time.
So it'd be additional, additional full-time?
Full-time person.
Which retirement benefits and all of that.
Right.
Okay, and that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I knew when I was here.
Would that require getting somebody new then and get rid of the part timer? It shows they're willing to go full-time.
And sometimes that's, sometimes there's people that we have employed that don't wanna go, you know, that three to do their, getting funds from somewhere else, maybe they're partially retired and putting them beyond 30 hours or beyond that pay range would put them beyond the scale of what they're able to do outside of their government, other government enterprise.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve. If I can get a second to a discussion, I got something else I wanna say.
Second. You're excited.
And discussion along the lines of discussion, you know, this being an enterprise, we talked about this a little bit this morning in staff. And we have in the past, and I commend Greg for what he's trying to do, and he keeps budget down to bare minimum. We've had a difficult time keeping staff and it's gotten way ahead of us and we're behind the curve on. And, you know, looking down the road, if we do this and we get back in line, if we have to. And, you know, looking down the road, if we do this and we get back in line, if we have to adjust our tipping fees up for a little bit, so be it. But we need to make sure that the facilities that we have in the county run to the best to our ability.
Yep.
I know, you know, I don't doubt when, um, Ryan and I look at it, I'm gonna rely on Brian's help, you know, for the next fiscal budget, that we may need an additional operator. Um, currently, we, currently we've got, um, one person on the books that hasn't been filled. And that may be what it, what it takes to help better manage, um, facility that we have in, in Cody particularly. But I, I've come in, you know, and I've heard it before, you know, from others, well, evidently money's not a problem now. And I'm not, I don't want to send the message that I'm not conscious of all costs, but I think in, in a lot of ways, we've been underfunding or under.
And we have.
For, for a while. I think, you know, I think it's apparent now that, you know, to catch up, we have to spend some money and we may need to spend additional money in the future. You know, I, I, I've read articles about people that are landfills that bring classes on, you know, for a tour, you know, the facility and an explanation of how, you know, how landfills run and, you know, I'd be embarrassed to take anybody to anywhere else. And that's one of the messages I've tried to convey to the employees is I'd like this to be a facility that we could bring somebody to and get tours to. I don't see any reason why it couldn't be, um, we have to do some work now.
Well, I mean, my position is, uh, I was in this, I was in this county when the population of Cody was lower than the elevation. And we're suffering right now from the increase in population in this county. And it just makes sense that if you have more people, you're gonna have more garbage, you know, I, I made it through high school math. And you're gonna have, you're gonna have more people, more garbage, more garbage is gonna require more, more, more help to get, take care of it, it's just like the people, you know, lying out, you know, out in the hallway in the clerk's office. It's, it's a, it's a, it's from having more people move to this county, you can't stop that, so. Been a move and seconded to, uh, approve moving the part-time to a full-time position, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Entertained motion, we go into executive session.
Some move.
Second.
Learn seconded, go into executive session, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you guys. Not, not anticipating anything.